Okay, we have, I see, three people for procedural motions. Chair recognizes Councilmember Borkens for a procedural motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to move Mr. Jared Monroe up to the top of the three-minute agenda, please.
You've heard the motion. It's been seconded, and the objection chair is none. Motion is granted. Councilmember Knox.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and move Sandhu Bakshish from the two-minute list to follow Mr. Zaf Tahir on the three-minute list.
Okay, it's been moved, and the objection chair is none. Motion is granted. Councilmember Kubaj.
Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and move Thelma Scott up to follow Stephen Guderud on the two-minute non-agenda.
Okay. You've heard the motions. I have a second. Need a second?
Second.
Been moved in a second, and the objection chair is none. The motion is granted. Okay, thank you. And see, because I see a number of signs that are here. Madam Secretary? I'm sorry, Councilmember Robinson.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules as well to move three folks behind to follow the first person in the three minutes. That would include Zaf Tahir, Sajtad Berkey, and M.J.
Khan. Second.
And I don't want to throw things off, Mayor, because I think we've already moved someone behind Zaf Tahir.
We have.
So that may move that additional person up.
You want to include that person?
Yes, please.
So Zaf?
Zaf.
Sandhu?
Bakshish, Sajtad, and M.J.
You've heard the motions. They're seconded. Been moved in a second, and the objection chair is none. Motion is granted.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker, Mr. Zaf Tahir.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for giving me this opportunity again in your public session. With you is a picture of the tombstone that is on my parents' grave site. They lie in Houston. This tombstone respects and honors three places that are very important to us, to me and my family: India, where they were born; Pakistan, where they got married; and Houston, where they decide to retire and they are finally lying in rest over here. I have dedicated, Mayor, and council members, you know, over three decades trying to push for common agenda, finding common ground, finding common issues where all people can come together, especially people from South Asian communities. You have seen me here talk about H.B. four, the Muslim ban, and other civil rights issues. I want to make one thing very clear: This peace and harmony we are talking about is in no way reflective of the great country of India, the contributions of Indian-Americans, the contributions of all South Asians who live in this city in peace and harmony and are beginning to find common ground in politics when it comes to municipal issues. Ask any candidates out there that they are working together, they are part and parcel of everybody's campaign. And I want all of my friends here who are here today with different slogans and signs that Trumps and Moody's will come and go. We are going to stay here as a city. We are going to stay here as a community. We need to continue to work together. India represents an opportunity for Houston, and Houston must welcome investment and trade with India, must do so with all South Asian countries. But India is too great. It deserves better. I think the issue that people have with Mr. Moody's visit is his past record. He was on a no-visa list when he got elected as Prime Minister. At that time, he was Chief Minister of a province and was charged with a genocide. It is one man who's coming here and really destroying the harmony and peace that we have enjoyed. Councilmember Christie, you know how much we have worked together and how far we have come. And this is at a point now where it's at a point where people are upset.
Your time has expired.
Thanks, Zaf. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Christie.
Mr. Tahir, so give me two suggestions on our future relations with India. Councilmember Davis and I and the mayor was over with the Vice President of India not too long ago and spent a good 45 minutes with him. So give me two suggestions that we can facilitate with a big trading partner that we can contribute to world peace.
So we have a responsibility to bring business to Houston and improve trade and investment. And I think that's primarily our city council's job, and you must continue on that track. But here's the dilemma: You cannot really be the judge of international issues. But councilmember, what if tomorrow by a large margin of four David Duke were to get elected governor of Louisiana? Would we be rolling out the red carpet? So we must politically decide. Yes, we are a nonpartisan body, but we are a humanitarian body. We must decide who we welcome and how we welcome. And we must send a signal, whether it is David Duke or whether it is Putin of Russia or any dictator, anybody, that when it comes to Houston, you'll find open doors and open policies if you abide by basic criteria of human rights. That's very important.
So that's the first suggestion.
Second.
Promote human rights.
Second, we must do our due diligence and take into account how things can evolve. Right now, we are looking at a situation where two people who are not very popular in Houston, or maybe one of them, are going to be together, and people have passions flying in all directions. And my suggestion to all South Asians who are here, whether they are pro-Modi or anti-Modi, we got to come out of this on 23rd of this month, just like before. Twenty... No, we need to be on 23rd.
One second.
Where we were before we started this thing. Please, respect the decorum, no comments. We have to find, Councilmember Christie, a method where a large city like Houston can maybe like a large city of London. Remember when President Trump visited London? The mayor of London refused to meet with him. So he took a stand. Yes, our charter is different, but we are moving in that global direction. We are moving in a direction where eyes of the world are on us and how we behave. They don't understand that this mayor has a different mandate. He does not control foreign dignitaries. He has very limited options in this case. But the world doesn't see it that way. They're going to see Prime Minister Moody onstage in Houston with a lot of elected officials. And that's our dilemma, and we need to find a way out. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Travis. Councilmember Travis.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me get this clear: You are wanting us not to have the mayor meet with the Prime Minister of India. Is that correct?
I would like City of Houston's interaction with the visiting Prime Minister of India, who has been charged with a lot of international crimes, to be mindful of the wishes of the city. So how we change that?
Who has charged him with these crimes?
He was charged by courts in India, and he was actually on a no-visa list.
Well, and this is my point, that he's the Prime Minister of India. He's charged in India, is what you're saying. And I don't know this. I just don't know. I didn't like the way that the mayor of London treated our president. I don't want us to treat somebody else's leader. India is a very large country. It is a democracy. I don't want us to be rude, because as we have often said, in Houston, we are inclusive.
Yeah.
We are welcoming. And I want to make sure that we stay welcoming. So I'm trying to figure out, if you're saying we've got a criminal coming here, that I don't know. I thought he was the Prime Minister of India.
He is, but if you check the record, when he got elected, the day he got elected, the U.S. State Department had him on a no-visa list. But because he is heading a government after five or six months, that was removed. And it was not just the U.S. France, Germany, UK, other countries had that. Now, it is a valid question, how do we control that? We must not be disrespectful.
Motion to extend.
To foreign dignitaries.
Second, in favor, opposed. Go ahead.
All right, that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Mr. Bakish Sandhu.
Honorable Mayor Turner and members of the council, I am Dr. Bakshi Singh Sandhu, President Council of Khalistan and co-founder of Six for Justice, a human rights organization. Thank you for giving me a chance to express my views and of the people of Punjab and Kashmir. Narendra Modi will be visiting here on September 22nd, and we, the people of Punjab and Kashmiris, will be rallying peacefully. Eight-plus millions in Kashmir are under total lockdown. This is man-made humanitarian crisis. People have no medicines, they have no food, all communication is cut off, and no news media is allowed. Indian government attacked Golden Temple Amritsar with tanks and killed more than 10,000 Sikhs who were unarmed, visitors, pilgrims, and they have done nothing wrong. Similarly, Indian government carried out the genocide of Sikhs in November 84, killing more than 30,000 Sikhs all over India. And similarly, the Christians are persecuted in India, their churches are burnt, and when they pray in their houses, their houses are attacked and they're injured and nuns are raped, and the police does not make the first information report. Six for Justice is carrying out a legal, democratic, and peaceful method of carrying out right to self-determination for the people of Punjab. And when our workers are distributing literature, they are caught, they are captured, they are tortured, and imprisoned to life. That is the India. The persecution of minorities has been going on in India since 1947. However, under the Modi India, it has escalated to such a degree that it has become unbearable. People of Kashmir are in a total lockdown. There are 800,000 Indian troops and 30,000 more have been sent. So my request to you all is that while Modi appears to be, or India appears to be, a peaceful on the outside, is the world's largest democracy, but that's not true. The proof is that India had refused the visas to our delegation of United States Commission on International Religious Freedom. So why has India refused the delegation of ours from this country, which is a bipartisan commission? They have not allowed the visa to enter India because they don't want you to see. The Christians basically are forced to convert. India is the 10th most dangerous country in this world for the Christians. So my request to you is, I know that you have a responsibility to respect him, but this, our campaign, our rally, is not against President Donald Trump. We basically want India to honor the right of people of Punjab and the right of people of Kashmir.
Your time has expired. One second, one second. One second. One second. Councilmember Christie.
Dr. Sandhu, I think we empathize with any country that doesn't have freedom of religion and human rights. So I think we empathize with that. Let me just give a compliment to the Sikh community, because I was at the candlelight ceremony, I think the mayor was too, when there was some killings of Sikhs in this country. And I've never seen a more peaceful and forgiving religion, and I just hope that that helps the world around. But we'll keep in mind what you're professing, and maybe we can help as a country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Knox.
Dr. Sandhu, I just wanted you to finish your thought. You seemed like you had a couple of other things that you wanted to say.
I want to say one more sentence, that this is a country based on human equality. This is a country based on our forefathers, making a statement that all people are created equal, and they have right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. However, I can say with confidence that in India, all people are not created equal, and they don't have equal rights.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, start it.
Sir, I just wanted to let you know that I'm grateful that you came down and informed us of your position today. I think it's important that we're all aware of the issues. Unfortunately, some of us are, and myself included in that, are so focused on, you know, our duties and the things that are in front of us, because we've got so much with so little resources, that it's important that you come down and share with us your position so that we can give another look at these issues. But I definitely appreciate the fact that we want everyone to be free, we want everyone just to have the same rights we do in our country. But sometimes I think that God has a reason that we want to influence others, and you've influenced us today, and I hope that we have influence on the leadership of India as well. And maybe that visit, there's a reason for that visit. Thank you.
I would like to make...
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor. Thank you very much.
I want to make just one little comment.
Thank you.
I ask for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak here.
The next speaker, Mr. Sajtad Berkey. Should be followed by Mr. M.J.
Khan. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. Thanks for giving us the opportunity. I also want to talk about the upcoming visit of Prime Minister Modi here in Houston. A prime minister who has allowed a curfew, a lockdown, since August 5, and that's 45 days. Eight million people trapped in a state. No communication, no internet, TV channels closed, 500 protests, 2,300 people injured, 36 pellet gun victims. And you can check all of these numbers if you so wish. This is a prime minister who practices Hinduism philosophy. And those of you who are not familiar with it, it's about ethnic cleansing, which is no different than the Final Solution presented by Adolf Hitler. I know my words are harsh, but I have been living in this city for 40 years, enjoyed it, loved it, made it my home, and I, today, am very angry that a prime minister, just because he's a prime minister, known criminal, killer of Muslims in Gujarat, is being welcomed, given a royal treatment here in our wonderful city. There are grave dangers to regional peace because of this man. We know, we're talking about two nuclear nations, and this gentleman is bringing war to that region. And here we are welcoming him, giving him a royal welcome in this city. The humanitarian crisis in the Indian occupied Jammu and Kashmir, it's an egregious violation of the fundamental rights and freedoms of the Kashmiri people in the Indian occupied They're not being able to access hospitals, medicines, food supplies, suspension of communications has worsened, and nothing. He won't do anything about it, and we are about to give him a royal welcome. Notwithstanding the virtual information blackout, some reports have emerged highlighting the abduction of young boys from their homes by Indian security forces. Political leaders and activists have been arbitrarily arrested and detained. Mr. Mayor, instead of, and the council, instead of welcoming this prime minister, India should be pressed to adhere...
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Councilmember, start it.
Thank you. Thank you again. Again, it takes information and sharing with us to understand your position, and we appreciate, I appreciate it very much. I just ask that, have you reached out to the congressional delegation to inform them of your concerns? Because I would think they would have a great deal of influence as well as to what the visit would, you know, the content of the visit. And I think that would be very important.
Yes, ma'am, we have. Why we are here today is because the city is hosting the mayor, the prime minister, not the congressional leaders. And the, I can give you an example. We had our Prime Minister Imran Khan in Washington just a couple of months ago. No political leaders were there, no councils invited him. He just came, met with his community, had a 25,000 people get-together, and went home. This is being turned into an official welcome and invitation by the city of Houston, and that's what bothers me.
I don't know that this council body has had any input on, I haven't had any input or consult of any kind as far as the visit is concerned. I have no plans of attending. I had, it was nothing that was on my radar. So again, I am concerned about your concerns, and we want to make sure that everyone is respected. And again, if there's, I strongly encourage you to go to the congressional delegation and make sure that they understand your concerns.
I thank you for your concern and your standing.
Thank you. Councilmember Knox.
And let me just say that there have been a number of people who've come to our city, just like the Prime Minister of India has come to our city. We are the most diverse city in the United States of America. We are very diverse, and this is the city of Houston. And we welcome a number of people to our city, just like, hopefully, one day, and we have extended invitation, to the Prime Minister of Pakistan to come to our city. And if the Prime Minister of Pakistan or any other major country come to our city, we are the whole city, and we will treat them as a whole city. It does not mean that we endorse their politics or anything that's happening there. But this is a very diverse city, and we represent everyone that exists within our city. And we are a global city, and we will host people in our city as the city of Houston. But it should not be interpreted as endorsing anybody's politics or sanctioning any actions that may be taking place in their respective country. But I am the mayor of this city, and as long as I'm the mayor of this city, I will represent my city. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 but please respect, please respect the decorum.
The next speaker. The next speaker.
Please. Please, please respect. No, ma'am, please respect the decorum. No, please, M.J., you cannot, you cannot, no, you cannot disrupt.
The next speaker, Mr. M.J. Khan, former council member.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Honorable members of the city council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate that. Mayor and council members, you are all much too smart than me, so I'm not here to give you any advice. I just want to share with you why I will be standing outside and protest on 22nd of September, and why I want to invite and appeal to Houstonians to show what this city is all about. This city is not about building businesses on top of skeletons. So if anybody is trying to bring business by killing over 95,000 Kashmiris in the last 20-some-odd years, then their business is not worth it. The atrocities committed in Kashmir are nothing different than what happened in Nazi Germany. The travesty of Hitler in Nazi Germany was not only that 6 million Jews were killed, it was also that decent people kept coy. We must not be coy when atrocities is going on. Martin Luther King said one time, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." So we need to, we put here on this esteemed chamber, justice and freedom, and that should mean something to us. You don't have to believe anything what has been shared with you. You can research it yourself by international media, The New York Times, Washington Post, Guardian, Reuters, and on and on and on. All this is done under the regime of fascist, fascism. Modi is a card-carrying member of RSS. Research that, what is RSS? An organization listed on terrorist watch by our own CIA. As you know, as you were told, he was denied visa because he perpetrated ethnic cleansing in Gujarat. Houston is a welcoming city. We welcome over 200,000 of our neighbors from New Orleans during Katrina. But we must also tell the whole world that we are not welcoming, this is not a city who welcomes passers. Mayor, your life is inspirational. You're a role model. You're a hero for us. And Mayor, I know that among your heroes are Martin Luther King, Nelson Mandela, and Gandhi. They must be turning in their graves with what fascism is going on in Kashmir and in India for the minority. If Dr. King was alive today, I guarantee you that he would join the peaceful protest outside rather than shaking hand with a fascist who is perpetrating all this.
Thank you. Councilmember, and let me acknowledge Larry Freeman, who is here representing Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. Thank you, Larry, for being here. Councilmember Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, it's always good to see you, and I want to thank you for coming down, and I certainly want to continue to thank you for your service to District F in southwest Houston, and you're continuing to be a voice for so many of us across southwest Houston, and we appreciate your service, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Christie.
I think I'm going to reiterate the same thing, is I don't think we're any smarter than you or a council member, and so we're listening, and I'll always listen to you. And I just know that I have pictures in my phone of the mayor and I were at Gandhi's home, and the mat on the floor, and taking pictures of his quotes. So we're listening.
Councilmember, when I was in this council, I was one of the champion for creation of Gandhi District in District F. And when I was out of the council, I was there when Gandhi District was inaugurated, because we believe in Gandhi's India. Today's India is not Gandhi's India. And it was Gandhi who was murdered by RSS goons, who are, who have this BJP as a political arm for which Prime Minister Modi is the head of.
Councilmember Knox.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Khan, good to see you again. I think none of us disagree that this country is founded on the concept of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that we have carved a nation here in the United States where we celebrate and enjoy those privileges that are really, everyone has those all over the world. There's also many places in the world where these sorts of tragedies occur, not just in Kashmir or in India. And so I'm unsure how we, as a city, can influence the entire world, you know, through this council chamber. I get what you all are doing, and I support what you're doing. I think you should be speaking out on these issues, without doubt. I just don't think that city council is going to be able to tell the President of the United States, or the State Department, or Mr. Moody, or whoever else that wants to come here. I'm not sure that we should have the ability to say, "You're not welcome." Can you explain how that would work? How you would expect the city to do that? How you would expect the city to do that and remain an open and welcoming city?
There was one man, Gandhi, was one man who started. He did not get discouraged that how the British Empire would treat him and how he can convince the British Empire. There comes times, sometimes you have an opportunity to be at the fork in the road. You can either have compromised your principles for short-term consequences and side with tyrants, or stand on your principles and tell the tyrants that this is not acceptable. What we can do is what we are doing, you all can do the same thing. By the way, answering your question, the congressional, four senators have already issued a statement on Kashmir, saying some of the things what we just said. This morning, Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee has issued a statement. Yesterday, two of our commissioners, county commissioners, have refused, issued a statement and refused to go there. So every one of us, and that's what I said, I'm not ready to advise you, I'm only what I can do. And what I can do is, you know, there are three ways, and this is part of our faith. If you see atrocity, stop it. If you cannot stop it, speak against it. And if you cannot even speak against it, in your heart feel it is wrong. So each and every one of us has given this life by the good Lord, and we can use this life for purposes which are modeled for our children, grandchildren, and their grandchildren. They should look back and say, in 2019, City of Houston stood up and tell fascists that you are not welcome in our city, and be proud of that, because future generations, just like Germany is ashamed of their history of Holocaust, we should not be ashamed of what's going on around the world. We should be proud of, at least we did our part.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker, Mr. Johnson.